Everybody ready? Good evening. This work session of the common council is now called to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Gates?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miles?
Here.
Councilmember Cress?
Here.
Councilmember Lingenfelter?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Steely?
Present.
Councilmember Waite?
Here.
Councilmember Yocum?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of the work session meeting is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. First item for discussion on the work session is Chabin Concepts update.
Thank you, Mayor. We have engaged Chabin to help us do economic development planning. And so they're in town this week, meeting and holding workshops. And so just wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to kind of give everybody an update on what they found, what they're working on. So I'll turn it over to Gary to make introductions and enlighten you.
Thank you, Ron. Your honor, Mayor, members of the council. As you know, we brought Chabin Concepts on a few months to go to help us with our economic strategic plan. So with that, this has been their week to really be onsite visiting. It started on Monday and will culminate on Thursday evening. So what I'd like to do is introduce Vicki Dahl. She is the head of the group that has come here. And Vicki is going to give you a brief snapshot of kind of the how, when, and where we are today with the study, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. As you said, my name is Vicki Dahl with Chabin Concepts. It's nice to be back in Kingman and see you all again. I am here with two of my partners, Don Sheldon Dahl, who is the site selection consultant we've brought on our team, and Mary Bosch, who is the downtown and retail expertise that we have brought on. We have spent, so far, we have spent, it seems like a week, but at least a couple of days, we've walked downtown, we've stopped in at a lot of the downtown merchants and talked with folks, and they were all very welcoming and glad to see us, which is always nice to hear. We held a downtown focus group meeting this morning and had about fifteen, sixteen there. So that went well. We had some good discussions, some good ideas. We've driven the industrial park. We've talked with a few of the employers out there. We've talked to the utility companies. We have talked with workforce development. And I'm probably leaving some people out. But we've also spent a good couple hours this morning with the planning department at the city, going over a lot of maps, lots of maps. And we then drove around some more this evening. And tomorrow, we have, tomorrow will be our kind of get back into working on our presentation and comparing notes and getting some, our findings together to present at the open meeting on 5:30, I think, 5:30, 7:30 tomorrow night. And then Thursday, we'll be meeting with reps from each of the commissions, the city commissions, and which will be focused more on a discussion on the implementation. You know, here are some of the strategy ideas that we have. Here are some of the strategies that you already have and some of the documents that have been done over the past couple of years. And do you want to revisit those? Are they still valid? Do we, what do we need to do here to kind of move some of those forward? So that's going to be the discussion on Thursday because, you know, like I said in the last time I was here, when we put a strategy together, the implementation part of it is the most important part, and we want to make sure that you have that. And as best we can, get actual people's names down there to say, we're going to add this up and see that it happens. So that's our intent for next couple of days. So the questions about what we're doing or will do?
Questions, anyone?
You may not want to get too much into it now, but since you have the site selector here that you're working with, just generally, what, you know, what is your, what are your thoughts on where Kingman is with, you know, our industrial park and where we need to really be focusing our future efforts? And I only say that because I know that in phase one, we've got maybe a little over 100 acres left. And after that's gone, unless we really move and get proactive in open phase two, we're going to be out of the industrial business. So it's concerning to me.
Exactly. That is going to be a challenge. I mean, the industrial park itself and the airport is an asset, but it's an asset with some risks. Being, you know, filling up, not having property available, and, you know, without getting too much into it also, there's one access route into the airport. That's, that's a challenge. So we definitely have some ideas. But yeah, I'm glad you're aware that there are some challenges with the airport, as much of an asset as it is.
Yeah. I think a lot of the employers in there have been saying those same things for many, many years. So I'm glad that it's kind of all going to be captured into this, this plan.
Okay. And I will say, from when I was here about, probably about a year ago, I, I do see a difference out at the airport. You know, the cleanup and the signage and things like that, and it's looking good. Appreciate that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on this item? Then we'll move on to item number two, Sunbelt Development Property Donation and Concept Plan.
Thank you, Mayor. I met a little while ago with Sunbelt and, excuse me, and they had indicated a desire to donate property, some open space and some public safety property, as well as perhaps it would be a good idea to just remind the council of what, where their property is located and kind of what they're thinking. And so in those discussions, I thought, well, we've, we've probably have an opportunity in this work session to just hear from these folks and let the council know that they are considering property donation for open space as well as our public safety needs. So we'll turn the time over to them.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council and city manager, I'm George Garcia, planning development consultant out of Henderson, Nevada, 1055 Whitney Ranch Drive. If you recall, we were before you, probably a little over a year ago, when we first introduced this concept. And obviously, a lot has transpired in that time. But as the city manager said, we want to kind of bring you up to date a little bit more on some of the, on some of the details and this opportunity that we think that Sunbelt Development Realty Partners, my client, would like to bring to the city. And more importantly, I guess, picking up on, kind of segueing from what I just heard, the opportunity basically to take an economic development plan, which is kind of a, let's say, a 60,000-foot level view, and where the city should be going, and we can basically begin to bring that to reality immediately. And that, that's a rare opportunity to be able to bring that combination. So to the council and staffs, you know, I compliment you on basically taking that forward-looking perspective of what you should be doing and then looking for the opportunities that you can seize to make that plan a reality. And that's, so I appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that. That's a rare combination. What we want to talk about of the 1,000 acres, I want to talk to you tonight about the 700 acres, particularly that we're proposing for mixed-use development, industrial, commercial elements, and then the residential that as well that's out there. The, the opportunity we see here is basically better lives, better jobs, quality of life and sustainability. As you bring development of the type we're proposing, diversity of the economy, more jobs, growth, more revenue, more infrastructure, more, more amenities, and we'll talk about those, things that help grow the community and continue because, you know, in my opinion as planner, there's only two directions. You're either growing or you're dying. You may not realize it if you're in this, if you're in, you know, you don't look at the picture correctly. You may think the status quo is sustainable, but it never really is. There, you guys know better than I do the assets you have, but one of the key ones, certainly we're looking at, is the location of this city on I-40. And with I-11 coming, the opportunities, we think, for transportation, logistics, distribution are enormous. We're seeing this in the country already as retailing changes, office changes, and the huge advances that are taking place in the logistics arena. And that includes everything from what's going on in the ports at LA to the ports that are being built in, you know, in, in Mexico, the roadway connections that are critical to making all this happen, the rail connections, et cetera. And you have an abundance of, of opportunity here. Now, one of the opportunities, of course, is, is land, but the key is, how do you turn dirt into real estate? And by that is, how do you create the value? And so that's, that's part of what we want to do, we want to talk about. And part of that is, I think you have the economic development plan, but which is a big vision, but then you need the catalyst vision. That is a development partner that can actually help realize it, as I was talking about before. You need that public and private leadership and partnership, the leadership in the planning, and then in the private sector, how to take that and begin to make that into a reality. Commitment, obviously, how do both parties commit to make that possible? It can't be done in isolation. Infrastructure, zoning, land use issues, economic issues are all part on the city's part, and then there are commitments by the developer to help fulfill and realize how, how to make that basically something that there's a return on your investment and the community's investment, not just in dollars, but in quality of life and amenities. So we think that public-private partnership that is so often talked about, what does it really mean? How does it work? In this case, you know, you're familiar with the area, so I think this is pretty much the area north of Interstate 40, and we'll show a better picture kind of outlining it. That's where the Rancho Santa Fe interchange is hopefully going to go here in the soon, in the future. And then, of course, is the airport, airway, avenue connector goes all the way up to Route 66 and feeds into the industrial area and opens up that whole area that you see that that's dirt into real estate. Keys to this, safe and convenient access, as you know, the current accident rate, which is triple the state's safety average, this, the Rancho Santa Fe can begin to substantially change and turn that around to reduce accidents, which lives, and the cost in transportation, which is critical in transportation these days. In our, in, in the Las Vegas area, just going through the spaghetti bowl is the difference between where businesses want to locate because of the time lost. And trucks are regulated, is a regulated industry. They have so much travel time, so any impediment to time becomes a very, a very huge detriment or a huge asset. Key to this area, obviously, from turning it to dirt into real estate, we need substantial infrastructure utilities, both public, private, and as we talked about, the commitment of both. So how do we get this public-private partnership going? Part of it is, is we need the Rancho Santa Fe interchange and Parkway. That's critical to opening up the access and the availability to make the development we're proposing possible. And we've, you can see here where we've identified that area, and you're certainly well familiar with it. That Parkway then would go north, as I said, to connect both to the land development opportunities as well as connecting to Route 66 and the airport area where the industrial is up there as well. Part of what we want to talk about is, you know, a sort of my client's vision and how that couples to the cities and, I think, a piece of history. From what I understand, and when I remember going back here, you know, you're, much like Henderson and where I'm in Nevada, started with a military kind of component to it. Airbase, you know, there was industrial development. Somebody had to have a vision to say, we're going to become a community, and we're going to turn this into something more than a military installation. You've got to realize how to, what that vision is, and then you work hard to make it happen. So as you're having a vision, my client's vision is basically to transform this land, take that asset of dirt and turn it into something that is certainly valuable and profitable, but at the same time, and personally rewarding, but for the community equally rewarding, and we'll show you some of that, hopefully. We think that part of this is political leadership has to adhere to the commitments as much as the developer. How do we do that? Development agreement is part of that potential for a partnership where both parties commit to something meaningful, and they have timelines, schedules, deliverables that you, it's essentially a contract. And that way, it's not just speculation, it's commitments that where there's deliverables and there's ability to make the developer pay for growth pace for itself as it's appropriate. The developer and landowner here is going to commit a significant amount of money to helping realize all this, and that's what gets incorporated into development agreements. And then we want to commit, and as we'll show you, making it a better place to live and work. And as I was saying, part of this is, depends on everybody being able to focus and take action. That development agreement is the culmination of that focus, how to make that actually happen and commit to it. It's not just talk. I'm a planner. I understand a lot of plans get done, and we see planners sit, plans sit on shelf because they lack the commitment, they lack the money, they lack the, that effort that it takes to transform plans into reality. So we have to come up with public infrastructure. That's complicated, but it's doable. We know how to do those things. Your utility department, your, your public works department are capable of this, along with the support we bring with private engineering and private consultants to do it as well. And then coupled with the state, ADOT, and their efforts for Rancho Santa Fe, which they've identified as a, as a key of critical state infrastructure. So here we outline the, in colors, the red basically being the, what we propose to be the new utility service area and the land development, and the purple being the Arizona lands and then the blue BLM land. But there you can see in the Rancho Santa Fe interchange, kind of feeding that whole area is pretty much opening it up from the I-40 all the way up to Route 66 and the airport. I'm not going to read through all of this, but I think really the highlights and critical pieces, and it better, we'll see them on the next part of the next exhibit. But this is where Sunbelt is putting in, both in writing and in words here and in pictorial form, the commitments that we want to make. And as you can see here, it's a open space for soccer field, fire department land, training facility, police facility, right-of-way for the airport avenue, and then for the, and then impact fees as we go. Ultimately, at the end of this, we, based on the studies that have been done, the recurring revenue that goes out, comes out of this project, and of course, as we phase and ramp up, is 125 million, you know, that's basically estimated. The initial contributions we're talking about in and of themselves are several, several million dollars for those elements that I'll point out to you now on this exhibit. Here you see the three key components that we're talking about. Identification of a 20-acre soccer complex, and you can see that where the arrow points to the, the dark green. And then you can see the contribution of right-of-way for the airport Parkway Avenue Connector, and then, which is over a mile of right-of-way, and then ultimately be part of, participating in the impact fees for all of the infrastructure and development. And then four acres set aside for the fire training facilities, fires and police substation, station site, and then ultimately, of course, some aqua for recharge. These are several millions of dollars in contributions that the city will be able to take benefit that are not just for us as our, this particular project, but benefit this whole area and facilitate the development and opening up. It begins to turn that dirt into real estate, a community asset, and basically shows my client's commitment to making this project happen. Here is just phase one rendering, and this is indicative of the kind of, of the way the project would look. And we break out, out of about 1,000 acres, this, this first phase here of about 85 acres shows you indicative of what, what is being proposed and typical of the kind of large industrial base that we would bring. The jobs that would be realized on the industrial side as we calculate the total for the whole area are probably on the order of, you know, 7,800 jobs. And that can vary depending on the type of industry you get, obviously, more or less. On the commercial side, we're probably, you know, close to 2,000 jobs. So the significant contribution in community assets, jobs, revenue that stream that will come out of this project for, for years, decades to come, and certainly the, what it does for property values in the whole surrounding area and basically helping, making sure that your development future is not just the 100 acres I just heard discussed, but enables you to have and attract continuing development. Because if you miss the opportunity, windows of opportunity, they're hard to come back. So it's, you know, best to grab them while you can. And we think this is a great opportunity. We're here to present that to you and happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Any questions or comments?
Thank you for your presentation. You covered this in the slides, but I'd, I'd like to just get a confirmation from you. At our last council meeting, we were discussing right-of-way along airway and Rancho Santa Fe. Staff was a little bit concerned about the utility companies coming in and jumping in on that and, and that we needed to move forward, but we did decide to put that off. And what I'm hearing you say here is that you're, you will be donating the right-of-way along airway and the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. As you saw in the exhibit, there's about a mile and a quarter essentially of right-of-way that would be our commitment for dedication to help make and facilitate that, that growth and development. Bill?
Thank you.
Introduce yourself.
So the contribution of right-
Introduce yourself first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bill Lindhart, Sunbelt Development, Las Vegas, Nevada. Want my address?
It's okay, go ahead.
All right. So the dedication of right-of-way would be in conjunction with a development agreement for the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
I have a comment and a question. First of all, I'd like to thank you for working with us now for well over a year as this thing has evolved, this project. And as we know, this area of impact is large for our community, and the long, short and long-term benefits are being well represented here. But you speak of this development agreement, and I would like for you to talk a little bit about the process that is going on. I know you've met with the city manager several times, and you're talking about construct with them. Can you speak to this agreement and some of the steps that will be taken to utilize this agreement as we approach the state and for the funding?
Looks like Bill wants to make some comments first and then, so go ahead, Bill, and then I'll, if there's any more, I'll fill in.
Yeah. So the development agreement is a process that we began speaking with the mayor and staff and Ron. It's, it's a working progress, as I understand it, right? So it's a combination of identifying revenue sources, the infrastructure that we need, that we can do the development that we need to do. So that was my understanding of the development agreement.
So the, the development agreements are very complex documents, and the reason is because they, they are a contract between the city and the developer in a sense to, to basically make sure certain things are going to occur. Because the development's looking for certainty. If you're going to invest tens or hundreds of millions of dollars, then development side wants certainty out of it. So at the same time, the city wants to say, well, hey, we're not going to grant all and make, go through all these efforts financially or land and zoning without getting some insurances in return. So both parties have to sit down and work out a very complex. So you look at, you look at the infrastructure, what infrastructure is needed, when is it needed, the timing and sequencing of infrastructure and land development. And there's, there's plenty of consultants that go, go into all of that. But at the same time, you have to look at the financing that's going to make each phase of development possible. You have to look at the entitlements, that is, the zoning and land use components that go with it. And there are a lot of other legal components to it, as to, I'm sure the city attorney will be a key part of it, as will all our staff. So it is a very intensive, very thorough, and very critical piece of the entire equation to make happen.
Thank you. Can I answer your question? Councilmember-
Just to follow up on that, the landowners along the right-of-way or along the proposed road will be asked to contribute as well. Is that correct?
That's, that's my understanding. That, and Bill's been working with his neighbors. This is a collaborative process and collaborative effort. So we, we're looking to work with all of our neighbors to be, to be part of this, and I think that's been ongoing. We have that, I have a good sense that that's going to occur.
Great. Yeah. I just want to, you know, just say thank you for the continued commitment and the investment into Kingman. I think that the donation offer here is, is pretty substantial, and I think that we need to thank, we need to thank you for that. And I'm going to read through some comments. But I think Sunbelt has been dragged through the mud this year, and I apologize for that. AS has KAMA, weirdly enough. For those who may not know, KAMA is Kingman's, our regional collective industry voice, and collectively, they, industrial manufacturing, distribution companies employ over 2,000 people in the Kingman region. I just want to read into the meeting record some of the locations of Kingman's industries so people can just see how maybe superficial that this outside investment argument that I've heard in some of the grapevine areas in town really is. You know, McKee Foods has locations in Kingman, Arizona, Stewart's Draft, Virginia, Gentry, Alaska, College Dale, and Chattanooga, Tennessee. American Woodmark has its headquarters in Winchester, Virginia, and manufacturing locations in Cumberland, Maryland, Gas City, Indiana, Humboldt, Tennessee, Jackson, Georgia, Kingman, Arizona, Monicello, Kentucky, Orange, Virginia, and Mordfield, West Virginia. Laren Engineering, who everybody's familiar with, or many people are, they have facilities in Kingman, Phoenix, and in Tucson. Lemanco, they have facilities in Kingman, Arizona, and in Jacksonville, Arkansas. And Scott Industries, they have facilities in Centralia, California, Kingman, Arizona, Lone Star, Texas, Muskota, Wisconsin, Talladega, Alabama, and Worcester, Ohio. True Value Distribution Centers, they have facilities in Atlanta, Georgia, Kansas City, Missouri, Kingman, Arizona, Denver, Colorado, Carrion, Hartford, Illinois, and Allentown, Pennsylvania. And we actually have Cascades Tissue. They're a Canadian company with a distribution and manufacturing facility here in Kingman. So the list goes on. There are many more companies out in our industrial park, but you get the idea, there is always going to be outside investment if your community is a good place to do business. And Kingman is a good place to do business. And I think that many of us up here would thank every single one of our industrial, manufacturing, and distribution companies for their locations here. And thank you for doing business here, if you're watching. We cheer you for your continued success and also for KAMA. We want to see them to continue to succeed. And we'd also welcome new companies to come to Kingman and establish facilities as well, including the ones that you're talking about here. Continued investment into Kingman is something that we need to collectively encourage. New industrial investment and development, you know, it raises all boats in Kingman. And it also, you know, it bolsters our economy. It creates new demand for secondary industries like housing, like furniture, like vehicles, like grocers, like restaurants, and like retail. So again, thank you again to Sunbelt for their contribution and to all companies out there that are looking to invest into Kingman. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Cress, hand.
I, I have a question for Mr. Foggan when we're done speaking with Sunbelt.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. You mentioned the ports in Los Angeles and some that are developing in Mexico. I think it's important, especially with our economic development, or economic development strategist here, to know that for years, in the years I've been associated with the industrial park and, and these companies, their focus has often been on a, we speak of a regional presence because we are a regional hub, but the intent is certainly one of more national and even international scope. And so I hope that that is reflected as we really do forward-looking thinking. I know that one of the conversations that has taken place for many years has been that of a foreign trade zone and would we qualify and things of that nature. And it has to do with importing and exporting and a certain formula that has to be met. And I only bring it up because it's, it's visionary, and it's something that these industrial leaders are thinking about. And all of this feeds into that. As we expand our logistics, our transportation and distribution capacity, I think we will get more able to fulfill some of those, those ideas. So I thought I would mention that tonight because I think competition, not just regionally but nationally and even internationally, is something that Kingman is prepared to vision and implement.
Thank you. I think that those are insightful comments. In fact, today, just as a comment on the, as we see tariff wars breaking out, something like foreign trade zones becoming even more, more relevant, whether that'll be in the future. But, you know, so there, those kind of discussions and thoughts, you know, to be ready and primed, whether it's regionally, nationally, or internationally, because today the competition's global in reality. Thank you.
Thank you. You have another question?
I just have one last question for our city manager. Ron, what's, what are the next steps? And I'm sure this has to go through a process. So what are the next steps? And has your staff, I mean, it looks like 20 acres for a public park and four acres for public safety. Where does it go from here? Just adding.
So, thank you. So what we'll be looking for, obviously, what we wanted to make sure is the council understood that, you know, this is a conversation- understood that, you know, this is a conversation that started more than a year ago. And so I know that the council has been interested in knowing kind of what is the developer willing to bring to the table, you know, how are we progressing on the interchange, you know, what does this end up looking like as part of our city? And so what we, there's a couple of pieces that need to happen. First of all, the annexation process is a big part of that, making, you know, being able to define zones and zoning, the zoning process, that all has to be part, you know, to have that discussion and have, to develop a development agreement, that property needs to be within the city limits. And so the next big step will be for us to figure out what is the best way, what property comes in as far as the annexation. I know the council, over at least since the airport discussion, has been interested in making sure that the city talks about and looks at annexing property all the way to the airport. And so that will probably be the very next step that needs to happen, kind of kicking off the idea of the agreement. So I know that I've met with Bill and his team with regards to, you know, bringing the other property owners along so that as we develop this, these areas, that all the property owners have, that they're agreeing to pay their portion of roads and infrastructure as well. So there's, so there's some development steps, but first of all, leading that would be annexation and then developing that, a development agreement that probably not only impacts Sunbelt, but also impacts all the properties that are affected by any of the infrastructure that goes in as part of the development.
Is this property already in city limits, or does it need to be annexed?
It needs to be annexed.
It does need to be annexed, or is this, okay, thanks.
Other questions? Did you have something you wanted to ask?
Thank you. Mr. Foggan, I appreciate that certain property investors and developers are extraordinarily interested in Rancho Santa Fe, understandably so. Having said that, when will we get an update on Kingman Crossing and that development agreement? I question if staff is as dedicated with their energy and efforts to move Kingman Crossing ahead as it appears that they are with Rancho Santa Fe, particularly given the fact that we don't know what our TPT situation is going to be in about a month.
Correct. And so I'm happy to report that the development agreement between the hospital and the city has been worked on from the city side. We have completed our review and sent it over to the hospital folks and their attorney. And right now, the agreement, that development agreement is in their hands, and we're just waiting for it to come back. So, you know, just as far as energy goes and the importance, as far as my staff, my team is concerned, the thing that we're working on is that we're working on these collectively at the same time with the importance of both at the very top of everything that we do. And so, like I said, as soon as we get the agreement back from the hospital, a matter of fact, I just recently had a conversation with Brian Turney about where they were in the process of getting it back to us. And last time I talked to him, he was preparing to have a conversation with his board with regards to the agreement. So we're just waiting for them to send it back our way. And if it's, if we get it back in a, in a pretty clean fashion, my hope is that we'll be discussing this agreement with the council sooner than later. So that's where we are.
Thank you. Councilmember White?
Yeah, with respect to the next step, which you mentioned would be the annexation plan, do we have a loose timeline that we can kind of, I mean, obviously, we wouldn't hold you to it if you were to guess, but just a loose timeline.
So we're doing some background, the background work that we can do in-house. This is a big annexation, and we will be going out to a consultant to help put, to put this together, because it's much bigger than what my two-person planning staff can handle. And so in conversations with Gary, there is a few things that we can do to make sure that the cost of that annexation is a little bit less. My guess would be that we will be engaged in the annexation early next, early next year, and it will probably take, I would guess, six months to get it done.
And then after that discussion is had, or after, you know, we, what, would we be able to start whatever process comes next, you know, once that is kind of, sort of being looked into, or is that the next step, and then after that gets done?
Well, your planning commission has some work to do, will have some work to do on establishing zones in the area. So that would be the next process after annexation is, you know, when these, and that may be able, we may be able to do that jointly at the same time the annexation is happening, is that they may be able to look at zoning and how that property ends up coming into the city. But there is a zoning, your planning commission will be key to reviewing how this property ends up ultimately being zoned, and they'll be making the recommendation to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
You had mentioned the cost of annexation, and I'm just, now I'm wondering if this is another project that could be placed on hold if the TPT rate is reduced after the November vote?
Again, that's probably why it hasn't been addressed a little bit earlier, is because there's this, a little bit of a waiting game, so. But like I said, staff is doing some of the background work so that, when that, when that comes up, it can move forward, so.
So yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Yocum, you had something?
One, one last question regarding annexations. Thought we were, we'd been told previously that proposed and areas of annexation are voted on by the constituents that live within the area to be annexed.
Correct.
You just mentioned six months to, a little more than that, for the proposed annexation. We know there are no annexation initiatives this November, is not the next time that, since we wouldn't do a special election, or?
You want to talk to it, Carl?
Not 2020.
It's not an election, it's a petition process. So you just have your property owners be signing off on a petition.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. As we consider annexing and as we consider the development of Phase Two, my understanding is that with the master planning that we can now do with the grant of $450,000 and with the discussion of the Rancho Santa Fe development and the interchange and the commerce corridor, if you will, to the airport, that that really enhances the ability to open that 1,200 acres. Is that, is that all part and parcel of what we are putting together as?
Yeah, well, that, the process that started out at the airport as part of their, kind of their master plan process is exactly that, is, you know, how does that next phase of what property the city controls, how does that roll out in development? And obviously, we're anxious to make sure that we have more developable, real estate for industrial users, because we don't want to turn, you know, you don't want to put the close sign up, as has been indicated a couple, through a couple of comments. And so the master plan that's happening at the airport's going to be really important. And again, saying that, we don't necessarily want to jump right into, hey, just here's, let's free up another 100 acres, because if you made, you know, if you, if you don't master plan it, you could end up hurting development of a large majority of the property. So there is a little bit of patience that, to be exercised in there, but again, we don't want, we don't want to grow any grass under our feet either. So there's, the process to have a master plan, the fact that it's rolling out now is a good thing, and being excited about it is really important as well. I think there, the excitement with, with planning gets us what we want.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Garcia, thank you, Sunbelt.
Mayor and Council, thank you very much. We look forward to working with you, your planning commission, staff, and the community going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item three, traffic safety discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. As requested by council a little while ago, we have the police department and the public works department that have been working together to share a presentation with you about traffic safety and information or efforts that we're doing, that we're taking to make sure that both pedestrians and car traffic operate safely. So turning the time over to public works and the police department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Give me one second, and we'll get up and running. All right. So there's going to be a couple sets of information that I'll give you guys, and I'll kind of explain as we're going through what each one of those data sets are. We identified the top 10 intersections in a couple different variations. What you're looking at right now is the top 10 intersections with the most recent data that was provided by KPD in regards to the number of accidents. And so you look and see which intersection it is and how many accidents there have, have been there over a five-year period. One thing to highlight, if you look at the areas that are bolded and underlined, those are actually ADOT intersections. I've spoken to ADOT, and they currently don't have any plans to address those, but did say they'd like to sit with us and discuss some, some potential projects to look at those areas. Excuse me. So one of the areas, or another thing to think about as we're going through this, is what areas are ADOT right-of-way. So ADOT actually has, just on the west side of Grandview Avenue on Beal, all the way out of the city limits, and then they also pick back up at Michael on Andy Devine and go, which would be the eastbound direction, all the way out to the city limits as well. So you'll notice in there you have Armour and Airway on that section. So in this, we ranked each of the intersections based on three criteria. One was crash frequency, one was crash ranking, and the other one is the severity of the crash. So the first one is the, the blue column is crash frequency. When you're rating crash frequency, that is essentially how many accidents there are in a given period of time. This is from 2011 to 2015, and this is information that was compiled by WACOG in a recent regional traffic study they did. They compiled all this into a dashboard that we can access, and we can drill down and pull out certain types of information and evaluate each of those. And that's based on region, by agency, by intersection, depending on what you're looking for. One thing that you're going to realize in here or see through all of these slides is a reoccurring theme of Stockton Hill, mainly from Detroit to Airway. The crash rate, when you look at a crash rate, that is essentially the traffic volume divided by exposure. So what you're typically looking at is the number of accidents per million cars entering the intersection. Crash severity is based on how severe the crash was, if there were injuries, no injuries, incapacitating and fatalities. When you look at grant funding, those grants are safety-based, and they typically look at the crash severity, specifically the incapacitating and fatalities, when they're calculating the, the value of a project. So this is a screenshot of the dashboard, one of the functions that were made available to us by this WACOG study or compilation of information. And if you look at the top right or top left, I'm sorry, the, the information is broke down by type of accident. If you notice, rear ends are the highest, most frequent type of accident. Those, those can typically, and I'll leave more to David when he gets to that point, those are typically attributed to driver inattention. So if you look down, you can look at how we broke this down, 2011 to 2015, all types of injuries, or I'm sorry, all severities, and then just based on Kingman. If you look at some of the information, there is kind of a bleed over tip sometimes in some of these, we actually pick up part of the ADOT right-of-way. This slide is based on the five-year crash severity. So this identifies the percentage of non-injury, injury, incapacitating fatalities. This section is just a heat map. So if you look at this, this is one of the areas where you see a lot of ADOT, and that's why I was saying, when you're looking at the, the last two slides, you'll see some numbers in there that probably look larger, and that's because we're picking up some of the information from I-40 and ADOT right-of-way. Part of that is just the dual response and, and reporting of these accidents. One of the big hotspots is downtown, right at the I-40 Beal intersection. There is some plans with ADOT to do a system-to-system interchange that's out a number of years right now. They're going back and doing an enhanced DCR and reevaluating what they had initially thought they were going to do. I don't know the exact date for construction on that, I'm not sure if ADOT knows that. The second section is when you look is Stockton Hill again. The number of accidents and the severity of the accidents, that's, that's the hotspot. And again, you can see that's really from Detroit to Airway, and that section of road has the highest traffic counts in Kingman, as well as the majority of businesses and This is just a, a level of service indication, and a lot of this information, just so you guys know, was pulled out of our 2014 PARES study. And so this shows the average traffics, traffic speeds, and what the level of service is in that Stockton Hill corridor. A big portion of the level of service, or a big reason that the level of service is so low, is due to capacity issues. The road is saturated. You guys have been through there, the speed limit's 35. Good luck doing that at lunchtime. As this indicates, you're down into the 15 mile an hour range in some of those sections. So this is just a list of some potential network capacity improvements. The first one would be intersection improvements, and that would be specific to an intersection. We may look at doing lagless or flashing yellow indicators, adding left turn phases to some of the signals that we don't have left turns on currently. Right now, the first phase it's shown, or one of the options it's shown, is traffic signal improvements. That's really equipment and, and components. We've, the street department has been upgrading signal components as far as controllers and the conflict monitors, and we're actually going to inventory our cabinets and decide which ones we can use, which ones need to be upgraded, and which ones need to be just totally replaced. Down further, the second section is vehicle capacity improvements. That is hard, hard projects. Roadway widening, access control. One of the problems that was identified in the PARES study is the number of driveways. The more driveways and side streets you have, the lower your level of service is going to be, because you have more vehicles entering and exiting that road. You typically try to minimize that as much as you can on your arterials, because you're trying to get people from point A to point B as quickly as possible, and it also helps minimize accidents. Intelligent traffic signals, I'll go over that a little bit later, as far as what the overall direction kind of timeline is for, for our signals. And then also pedestrian, pedestrian access improvements. Sidewalk improvements, that could be widening or just new sidewalks. Bike lanes, we've been adding bike lanes as we've gone along, and multimodal transportation such as shared-use pathways. I just wanted to give you guys a example of intersection, of an intersection improvement. So the blue side of this was actually completed a couple of years ago. They widened out Airway to four lanes, all the way from Stockton Hill to Western, relocated a signal. The second half of that, the area in black, is what would be proposed in the 2014 PARES study. This would improve the capacity and also the safety of the intersection with medians and other, other items that would be added. Keep in mind, the 2014 engineer's estimate for this in the PARES study was $458,000. So it's a pretty significant amount when you're looking at a single intersection, and we have obviously more than one intersection in that corridor. at a single intersection. And we have obviously more than one intersection in that corridor. So this is our traffic signal improvement timeline. There's no times on it because right now it's based on availability of budget. Right now, we are actually, as I mentioned, we're doing controller and MMU upgrades. I'm not super old, but most of the controllers we have are older than I am, so they have limited functionality. A lot of the things that we want to look at potentially adding such as lagless or flashing yellows, some of the other things, we don't have that functionality right now within our cabinets, either because of the cabinet or the components within it like the controller. Again, next phase will be cabinet upgrades and replacements. We're working with a signal cabinet company right now. They're going to come out and help us inventory and identify which cabinets we actually can upgrade and what upgrades we need to make. They will also look at the cabinets that need to just totally be replaced. Just as a FYI, I guess, when you're looking at a cabinet, if you don't include labor and other things that would go into actually having that cabinet in place, just that silver box that sits on the corner of the intersection, that and some of the components in it are, are about $17,000. So it is a pretty significant amount of money when you look at the number we have. We're not like Phoenix where we have hundreds of intersections, but these, these costs add up pretty quickly. The next one would be signal improvements. And that may be, again, adding lag, lagless, flashing yellows. We have intersections that don't have left turns as far as a protected left turn, so we could look at adding those. We've looked at two intersections that are actually on the Stockton Hill corridor, and those are Gordon and Keno. Keno is not going to be a terrible project, but Gordon will be a pretty substantial project. That, one of the poles there are actually underneath one of the transmission lines. The pole and the mast arm are not rated for the additional equipment we need to add to, to accommodate another phase. So that would be a, a pretty, pretty lengthy and, and costly project. The next phase would be connecting our signals and ITS system. So Stockton Hill would be our first priority, mainly because that's one of the issues we have. We had looked with ADOT in the past. They actually have fairly recently started a ITS, an intelligent traffic signals division within, within ADOT. And their goal is to use technology to, to help mitigate the traffic issues rather than building out of it. Some of that would work for us and it would be good. We share common corridors, mainly Stockton Hill. The I-40 stoplights are actually operated and maintained by ADOT. We coordinate our efforts mainly through a coordination plan for our timing to try and move traffic through. So we do a coordination plan and they input those, those timing plans into their controllers to help work with our system. The next one would be a traffic operations center. And this is not necessarily required by the size of our city. You see Phoenix and ADOT who have traffic operations center where everything comes to it. Those, those are typically monitored 24 hours. We need that because we want to move to the next phase, which would be adaptive signals. And this again would be Stockton Hill's first priority. And what adaptive signals can do, we are collecting information as vehicles are coming through our corridors and through our intersections. And we can actually calculate origin destination. We can calculate average speeds. We can calculate the time and route. And so what happens is those signals can actually make adjustments live, on the fly, so to speak. But you have to have a common place. So once all our signals are connected, those are coming back to that TOC and you have a software that helps run that program and communicates and averages out with the signals. The last phase, which is a long ways out for us at this point, we know they will be coming, will be connected vehicles. We will, whether it's by mandate or just by necessity at some point in time, have to accommodate this. That is not something we are looking to add in as far as the equipment. But what we would have in place is the equipment that would work with the additional equipment required for connected vehicles. This would be postponed until that need was actually here. Sorry, kind of a dry subject. So we've done a number of projects so far. We have some more that are underway through grant funding and, and other means. One of those was upgrading to 12-inch signal faces from the eights that used to be in place. Countdown pedestrian signals, that was another grant. Sign inventory and replacements, that one is currently in progress. We are, the solicitation should be out for the inventory portion. We've made a number of replacements through the grant. We'll inventory. And then once that's inventoried, that will help us identify signs that are not in compliance based on reflectivity or maybe they're made out of an old standard, those sorts of things. We'll be able to actually, similar to what we did with our payment preservation program, where we inventoried everything, we can rate it and then we can budget and calculate what those deterioration curves and things are. So we can, we can keep up with it a little more accurately. The solicitation is out right now. I think the schedule was a December start date, somewhere in there. Multiple sidewalks have been completed, including pathways, sidewalks along roads. And again, I'm using this since these were items that were identified as part of the PARA. So these are projects that have been completed since that PARA study was done. Additional bike lanes, that's been through projects such as Gordon, Airway, Andy Devine. Stockton Hill will be the next phase of that. We'll, we'll be adding additional bike lanes in that section. Protected left turns was another grant for Beverly and Harrison, Airway and Willow. Stockton Hill Road Corridor Safety Countermeasures, that one is, is not formally been, I'm sorry, has formally, we, we've been approved for some additional safety measures on the Stockton Hill corridor. They won't be major for what we really need to get to as far as widening and things. Probably see speed feedback signs, high visibility backplates, high visibility markings, that sort of thing to help improve awareness of drivers. Another one is curb bump outs on Beal. Eligibility was granted. And again, we've been informally told that it looks like that project will get funded, but this project would be out, I believe, 2021 or 2022 as far as construction goes. And the speed feedback signs are actually part of the, of a larger countermeasures project that was granted through an H-SIP grant. And with that, it's Mr. Rice's turn. Sergeant Rice.
David Rice came in Police Department. Thank you for your time. If you look at the breakdown that Jack had already discussed, most accidents are inattention-based, whether it be a backing accident, a rear end accident, they're all in, inattention, distracted driving. They're in, inattention to their speed, vehicle traffic flow, as well as their surroundings. People are busy in their daily lives. They don't have that separation. They're on their telephone. They are thinking about what they're doing tomorrow or later on in the afternoon, what they're eating for lunch, what their kids are doing, whatever this distraction is, it causes the inattention. The distracted driving is, is through cellular phone use, talking with passengers, eating and applying makeup. A couple of weeks ago, I, I saw somebody yelling at somebody in a car, talking on a telephone while they were also eating. How they got this all accomplished, I have no idea, but it's, it's what we see at times. And they're just simply impatient. We wish that they would just simply slow down and enjoy their town. Speaking about impatient, this last weekend we had the festival. During that festival, we had, how do you change this here? We had a, a lot of issues, traffic control related. We would set out cones and within a minute or two, somebody would drive behind us and pull the cones out of an alleyway, drive through, leave the cones set aside and continue on. We, Jack almost got ran over by a person that was simply wanting to get coffee, I believe, in the morning. They ran past, I believe, two road closure signs. So is that inattention distracted driving or is that just impatient? So it's, people are used to going one direction and that's all they see, is going that direction. There are two types of distracted dri, excuse me, three types of distracted driving and how to avoid them. Simply just pay attention to the roadway. That's, and what you're doing, turn off the cellphone, quit reaching for the phone and avoid calls. And just stay focused on the roadway. The enforcement of the top 10. Enforcement challenges are this. Traffic congestion, location to stop. If we make a traffic stop on Stockton Hill Road during midday traffic, we are furthering that traffic congestion. Hopefully we can get them to pull off to a side street, but that's not necessarily the case because the people that we are, are pulling over are nervous or, or are not paying attention to that, that we're initially trying to pull them over. So we're going a period of time or a distance after the initial stop's intended location was. Again, the traffic stop causes the, the, the traffic congestion or further restriction. The options here are aggressive enforcement. The City of Kingman, Kingman Police Department investigates roughly 1,000 accidents a year. We write, issue warnings, citations and/or verbal warnings roughly 11,000 times a year. So that's a pretty good breakdown. So we're doing something. We might not necessarily concentrate our efforts on Stockton Hill Road. Hopefully that education turns, you know, off of a side street. And hopefully that education carries forward to those congested areas by way of just changing driver behavior. That's what we're after, is changing driver behavior. It's not necessarily the citation or that written warning. It's trying to get them to curb whatever they're doing at a time, whether they be talking on a cellphone, speeding and/or just simply having a distraction. The other option is, is media campaigns. There's several PSAs that are in process. We are currently reaching out to different radio stations to, to plug in some, some radio time for those announcements. And there's also Facebook. I'm not aware of Facebook. I don't do Facebook. I, I don't understand Facebook. I know it's a, a good thing and I get a lot of posts that are forwarded to me from Facebook, but it's just not something that I pay much attention to. Thank goodness I have staff that does. And then the other is, is mailers. And the lastly is, the majority of all accidents would probably not exist with attentive drivers. So if people would just pay attention to their surroundings and what they're doing from moment to moment and ultimately get to their destination safely is what we want. So with that, questions?
Thank you. Questions?
I have a question for Jack. I have noticed in a lot of communities, in Arizona especially, they're adding roundabouts all over their town to replace four-way stops and to keep their traffic moving. Do you see that in our future here?
ADOT specifically Alvin, that's over kind of our region, they're using them everywhere, has those. Those would be much, part of a much broader look at where we would break down and where we'd use particular types of traffic control. Currently have nothing planned, especially for the top 10 that we identified in this.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? Yes, go ahead.
My questions are also for Jack. Jack, thank you both for your presentations. A lot of good information for, for everybody to go through and kind of wrap your brain around. But let me ask you about yellow light duration. Does that make any difference, any measurable safety difference? Is there any data on that?
So the, the yellow light duration, changing it here, the yellow light duration is actually, all the duration of the lights are actually set by a timing plan. That timing plan is developed by an engineer. So what they're typically doing, and I say typically, what they are doing, is they're, they're estimating the time that a vehicle goes across the road and they use data that's driven or not subjective. They use data that says, okay, typically a car is doing this many feet per second. This is how wide the intersection is. So this is what your yellow time would be. This is what your red time, this is what your clear time would be.
Got it. How often is that calibrated, for lack of a better term? Sorry, not, not an engineer.
The, the timing plans that we have currently that were done on Stockton Hill, I believe, were last updated in 2015. Unless there's an update or a change to an intersection. When I say an update, an update to standards, we have seen used pedestrians, they do the same thing. Okay, a pedestrian typically walks this many feet per second, the intersection is this wide, so you want to have this much time on, on your pedestrian phase. Unless you make a change to the intersection or standards change, there aren't really any updates needed. If we did identify, hey, potentially a timing change would help an accident issue in an intersection, we could identify that and, and reevaluate that.
Got it. I guess my last question, just on the information that you presented, both on vehicle capacity improvements and also on the traffic signal improvements. You know, by the data, Stockton Hill Road from Detroit to Airway, that's the most dangerous stretch of road that we have in town, right, by far?
Yes.
And, I mean, why haven't we widened it?
Money. That'd be the short answer. So one of the things that you'll see, we want to bring in is, is a DCR, a design concept report. And really, that'll bring us into recommendations and probably some low-level design for that, that corridor. That project in itself is probably in the hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to identify what the needs are in that section.
I've got two questions for Mr. Foggan. Mr. Foggan, the widening of Stockton Hill Road from Detroit to Airway and the traffic signal improvements, are those projects that are identified on the city's adopted five-year CIP?
That I do not know.
Because I think I looked through the CIP that we have, the, the current budget year, and I saw, I saw widening of Stockton Hill from Detroit to Airway. Is there someone on staff that can answer that for me? I think I saw it.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure that it, we can confirm that it is actually on the adopted CIP.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The, the widening of Stockton Hill Road from Detroit to Airway is on the unfunded.
It's on the unfunded?
Yes, it is.
So the, the dedicated revenues, that, that would be the half percent that could be allocated to that project to widen Stockton Hill Road?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? You have one?
Just a quick question. In terms of safety, what estimated effect would widening, I mean, do, do you have some kind of estimation as to what effect it might have to widen that road on, you know, traffic accidents, things like that?
As far as the reduction in traffic accidents or things, I don't have that. That would be part of a DCR. We would look at those items and say, okay, what, when you're looking at improvements, you're looking at countermeasures, what the type of accidents are and, you know, what, what the area is, what could potentially be causing those. And that, that identifies the countermeasures that would be needed. And with those countermeasures, you could, you could estimate the reduction in accidents at that point.
Okay, so some kind of study would have to be done to really give us some kind of number or an estimate?
Yeah, I could guess, but it really, it takes a study.
Okay.
May I ask a question, maybe this to be directed to you. If in fact we're actually looking at widening Stockton Hill Road, I mean, I drive it every day, I'm sure we all do. It looks like now the city would almost have to buy, not just right-of-way, we'd have to buy buildings. We've got some, some businesses, the buildings almost above the sidewalk. Having said that, at, at the very least, are we doing something right now about addressing the setback issue on Stockton Hill Road?
Again, I, I would love to be able to answer that, but that, I, I don't believe anything's been done other than to have the plan in place. Jack, maybe you can?
So yeah, I can definitely add into that. So as time's going on, yes, they are addressing setback issues. And engineering has also been, when these, these developments are done, not developments, but when properties are developed, they're actually acquiring right-of-way. So there are portions of this, we actually have right-of-way already established. It's not a continuous line throughout. But if you look, we went back to the airway intersection. If you look at airway, the pole that would be on the southwest side, on the Walgreen side, that pole was located pretty far back behind the curb and sidewalk, accounting for the fact that sometime we're going to be putting another lane through there.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes. First of all, thank you for your presentation. I heard one of those PSAs as I was driving here tonight. Officer Spivey, I think, was telling us not to text and drive, so I appreciate it. But recently I've been asked about the, asked why are there no pass-throughs between some of like Walmart and Smith's? And as we see in some of the other cities, Phoenix, you can just drive through these different entities. And so I wonder if you could address that. I think the city did want to do that, but if we could keep traffic from having to go in and out of Stockton Hill all the time, that would be a good thing. But it has to do with the corporate owners, does it not?
It does. That, that option has been discussed in the past. I'm not sure what ability we could have legally if we added codes and ordinances to mandate that. I know a couple businesses were approached that are- I know a couple of businesses were approached that are in that heavy-use area, and neither one of them really seemed to be interested in that, mainly because they're competing businesses.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And finally, the final work session item is golf RFP update.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this actually will be fairly short. We interviewed two folks who put in RFPs for the operation of the clubhouse and the restaurant. And so Mike is just going to fill you in on what we found.
Yes, so from our RFP, like City Manager Foggan said, we had two candidates and we interviewed both candidates last Thursday. The interview panel consisted of City Manager Foggan, myself, Tina Moline, the Finance Director, Jackie Walker, our HR and Risk Management Director, and Carl Cooper. And we also had a very knowledgeable golf, a person that golfs at our golf course about five days a week. His name is Stephen Smith, and he's retired from the County of Los Angeles. And when he worked for the County of Los Angeles, he was responsible for overseeing all their golf operations and their contracted, contractors that worked on their golf courses there. And they had about 14 golf courses. So he was a very valuable person on the interview panel as well. And we're in the process of evaluating those proposals and going over that information. That's where we're at right now. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any idea when that might come before council?
We're planning on having it for next council meeting.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it is 6:41. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the work session. We'll reconvene the business meeting at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We'll return at 7:00 PM.
Aligns everything with the storage requirements.
One minute. Good evening. This regular meeting of the common council is now called to order. There's no need for roll call. If the invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Phil Shaw of Trinity Episcopal Church, could you kindly stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance?
Let us pray. Gracious God, in the words of your prophets, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the cities of the earth. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order. And that men and women from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity. Send to this city of Kingman and those who lead it the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people in accordance with your will. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, we don't have any minutes to approve this evening. So we'll move on to item two, which is appointments. Item A, appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. There are currently three vacancies on the Historic Preservation Commission. Paul DiNublio and Dan Messersmith have submitted applications for appointment to this commission. Council may hear from these applicants for consideration of appointment. I do understand Mr. DiNublio did send a letter that he was interested in participating, but had a previous event?
He spoke with staff when they called him to notify him that this would be considered this evening, and he had a previously scheduled family event and couldn't miss it. But he did say that he's still very interested in serving on the commission.
Thank you very much. And I see Mr. Messersmith is here in the audience. Would you care to address the council at this time?
Not sure I heard exactly what you said. That's my hearing, not your speaking. What would you like to know?
If you would just, first of all, we want to thank you very much for submitting an application. Maybe if you would share with the listeners and the public here some of your background and why this would be a good fit?
Okay. I'm a forty-year resident of Kingman area. I've been involved in history for, well, since the early eighties with the County Historical Society. I'm current county historian, have been for about twenty years now. I spent thirty years' service to Mojave Community College, serving with Jen a whole lot of years there. And I've, when I saw the opening, I mentioned to you that I saw that opening, and you said, asked me to apply, and I did. I think I have the credentials and the background to be of good service to the city of Kingman with the background and the history and the knowledge I have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the applicant? Yes, go ahead.
I have no questions, but I just want to thank you also for applying. And I want to say that in my experience working with you over those many years, I always appreciated your excellence, your dedication to excellence, and the remarkable contributions you made to the college while you were there. So, thank you. I know you'll do a great job for the city, too.
Thank you, Jen.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much. All right. There's no further discussion. I'll recommend nominations for appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. Yeah, I think that'd be fine unless anyone has an objection.
I'd like to move that we appoint Mr. Messersmith and Mr. DiNublio to the Historic Preservation Commission.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, thank you so much for taking the time. The city will be in touch. You'll go through an orientation. Thank you so much. Moving on to item three, call to the public comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. No action will be taken as a result of public comments and will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There'll be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. I have one person that's signed up to speak this evening. I hope I get this name right. Ben Golinski? Was it close?
I was correct. Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council, and people of Kingman. I have a treat for you all. What I, I'm actually from Oregon. I'm a chemical-free farmer and an investor. I'm also the new owner of Bicycle World here in Kingman. And what I'd like to discuss is a technology that's very unknown. It's called an atmospheric water generator. And what it is, is it's actually a very simple system that takes the moisture out of the air and collects it through the filter via coils and then collects it in a water tray. That's usable water that can be used for any need for the water, as well as filtering it and making it drinkable water as well. In the future here, in the local areas, I see that this is a much-needed system that I think should be brought to everyone's attention and looked at how we can implement this system for the use of the obvious need of water. An ancillary system to it is a profitable or monetizing aspect of it where you can bottle the water. I was thinking of a system called, of a water bottle called Mojave Water, selling in a local Walmart, Smith's, gas stations, and using that as a revenue for the city of Kingman and the local areas as well. This is something that I've been looking into recently, and I'd like to just kind of bring it to everyone's attention. And kind of, the more brains on it, the better, because it's the way of the future. A lot of countries in South America are currently implementing it. The more I researched, in our local area specifically, there's only about three months with a significant amount of humidity. But over the Colorado River, since when the sun beams down on the water, it evaporates the water into the surrounding moisture, and these systems extract the moisture out of that water. There's an average of about twenty-five percent humidity along the Colorado River. So there could be enough water extracted out of that for everybody. And that's pretty much the technology. And then the monetizing aspect, which would allow this to be actually privately funded without the need of any city funds. And then all the profits of that water would go, be donated, of course, to the city of Kingman and the surrounding areas. And that's basically it. Any questions?
No, thank you very much for making that presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone else signed up to speak at this time. Does anyone wish to address the council? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If any discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Anyone on council wish to have something removed from the consent agenda? Yes?
Item F, please.
F, isn't Frank?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item F.
So moved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to item F, authorization to execute Hinton Burdick fiscal year 2018 audit engagement letter. Hinton Burdick was hired as the city's auditors in 2016 in the agreement with Hinton Burdick. That's a tongue twister after a while, right? A five-year schedule of audit fees was included. These fees were based on the services, programs, and funds identified in the 2015 RFP. With the city assuming the airport operations during fiscal year eighteen, the fiscal year eighteen audit scope will greatly increase. As a direct result of the revised scope, the city's audit fees will increase from forty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to fifty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Staff recommends approval of Hinton Burdick's fiscal year 2018 engagement agreement and authorizes financial services director to execute the agreement. Your question or comment, councilmembers daily?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Tina. First of all, is this not the same company that's been auditing the Kingman Airport Authority for the last couple of years?
It is the same.
So they are familiar with their books? And I assume that's how they probably came to this number. They knew how much it would, it would cost to audit. Is there any reason why we, we wouldn't go out and maybe put out an RFP and look for a new company to see if we can't find a better pricing?
So, actually, we went out for an RFP a few years ago with this company. This is the first of their second additional term, as was stated in the communication. And they were actually, and we did not select them because of this. It just happened to be that they were actually considerably lower than what some of the other firms had proposed at the time. So again, it wasn't our primary concern, but they were lower. Now, what we will be doing, and this was part of the original RFP and part of our internal controls, is that after that second additional term, and that's only if we move forward with the second additional term, we will be required to issue another RFP for another five-year term with a different, with a different company.
Okay. My concern was just, they had a representative at the first meeting that we had with the Kingman Airport Authority, and I felt that he was somewhat unprofessional in the statements that he made. So I would prefer to maybe look for a new company at this point if we're already crossing this bridge where we need approval for more funds. Is that possible to do this year then? No, it's already too late. We have to use them.
We need to use them, because if not, then it's going to, we won't meet the deadline that's required. So for this year, we will have to move, move forward with them. However, we can certainly go out for an RFP for fiscal year nineteen if that is the direction given.
Okay. That, I, so I understand that. And I would be more comfortable if that was the path that we took at this point is to use them because of the timeline. But, but then after this, look for a new company to use.
Any other, that answers your question? Go ahead, please.
Sorry, I have a quick question for you. If you can remember back to the proposals that were made, the other proposals that were made, and take those into consideration, when you look at the increased fee, is this firm still less expensive than the other proposals that were made?
So I can't remember back quite that far. But I do know that it was at least ten to eleven thousand dollars more. They were in the mid, mid-fifties and into the sixties when we, when we selected Hinton Burdick. So I don't know where they would be at this point, but at that time, they were in the mid-fifties to sixties.
And do you think generally, since that time, those numbers would have increased as, as time progressed?
Absolutely.
You don't always want the cheapest auditor.
Did you have another question or comment?
No.
Councilmember Lincoln Felder looked like he had something.
Yeah, just one question. If we approve these guys tonight, are you going to be the point of contact for them directly? Because I know, I think I know what comments the council member was referring to, and I was also a little uncomfortable with those. So as long as I know that somebody that I trust is going to be their point of contact.
I will be onsite with the auditors when they're here October twenty-second and twenty-third.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
Any other question or comments? Thank you very much for that. Seeing none, well, this is now an action item. Entertain a motion to approve item F of the consent, on the consent agenda as proposed.
I move that we approve item F to move forward, but to put this out for an RFP in 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to first item on old business. And if there's no objection, there's been a request that we move item six A, which is under new business. And we'll take that right after this item, proposed ordinance 1876. And then we will discuss ordinance number 1875. So to begin, item five A, review and discussion of proposed ordinance 1876 prescribing limitations on the parking of vehicles in residential zoning districts. The city council requested at the June 5th, 2018, meeting that the city attorney's office, planning and zoning, and KBD further refine a proposed change to the city code, previously requested by council, which will prescribe limitations on the parking of vehicles in residential zoning districts. The newest version of the proposed change to the city code, ordinance 1876, is a new section which would repeal and completely replace city code section seven dash seven seven one. It is attached heretofore the council's further consideration. Staff respectfully request direction from the council. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. And yeah, to reorient everybody to where we are on this. This is something that we were just requested to draft, to see if, if it's viable and enforceable, to see if it's something that anyone wants. It's not something, something that our office is driving, but we drafted it on request. The, to reorient everybody back to the city code. In the city code in section seven dash seven seven point one, that basically in summary prohibits commercial parking on residential streets. That's what is existing right now. In this ordinance that we've drafted in conjunction with the police department and Rich Ruggles with planning and zoning, this 1876 would totally replace that. The reason being is because the top part of the proposed section deals with the same topic. So it'll just, it'll just repeal that and then replace it. The bottom half, the paragraph in parentheses B, starting with storage and parking of unoccupied, non-commercial recreational vehicles, boats, truck campers, et cetera. That's the new language that we're trying to draft to see if it's something that council wants or not. So this is the latest version that we have, and it can be read in conjunction later with Rich's ordinance, which is coming up in a couple of items, because he has a companion, new zoning ordinance, 1875. And the two kind of work together. But I think you can use 1875, and you don't have to have 1876 if you don't want to. So, so basically, that's the wording in 1876, and we just need to know if that's something that council likes or not. And then council asked also, does anyone else do anything like this? I know Rich, Rich, I think, has, has some input on, on what they do with zoning ordinances, and I think he has a PowerPoint. I just look strictly at city codes in some of the major cities that I could pull up. And again, basically, just in a nutshell, what we're looking at, what we're sort of proposing in our proposed language, is we're saying no RVs on residential streets in Kingman whatsoever, except with these certain exceptions, and there's like a seventy-two-hour rule. There's a couple of other exceptions. So with that in mind, looking at some other cities, I looked at Yuma. Their city code does not address RVs. I looked at Phoenix. They don't address RVs. They just don't want you parking them on a floodplain. Lake Havasu City, they don't prohibit RVs at all. In fact, I talked to the city prosecutor out there, and they don't have anything of the sort. Tucson, I'm sorry, Tucson says that you simply cannot park an RV on any, any street, not just residential streets or residential districts, for longer than two consecutive days. Flagstaff doesn't single out RVs specifically. They just ban all large vehicles from parking in residential areas except for loading and unloading. So I'm actually not sure if they actually contemplated RVs, or if they're talking about commercial vehicles. And then Bull, in Bullhead City, they say that you can't park an RV, trailer, or boat on a public street, any public street, for more than forty-eight hours. So as far as specifically what we're looking at, I didn't find anyone that limits you to just parking specifically RVs. I didn't find anyone that limits you to just parking specifically RVs on residential streets. And I didn't see any language anywhere that limits you to just parking in front of your own home, like our exceptions do. So anyway, so that's just the proposed language that our three departments came up with. And I know the chief is, is on hand in case you have questions about enforceability or anything like that. So just, we just ask for direction, which way you want to go with this.
Well, I, I need some clarification.
This is ready for adoption if so choose.
Okay, but I, I guess I need some clarification. Is there a potential, are we looking at both ordinances? Are we looking at one versus the other? I, I'm not clear.
This one's for the city code to address parking on the street.
Okay.
And the, the next item, which is for the zoning code, which is what'll manage zoning.
There you go. Thank you. And we're going to take that next. But right now, we were just talking about 1876.
Correct.
Thank you.
And it is avail, you can adopt it tonight.
Okay.
It is ready for adoption.
Well, I know we have questions, discussion, we have people have signed up to speak on this issue as well. Okay, so did you want to start, Vice Mayor?
I, I have a question. I'm still trying to get clarification. Because in the, in the storage ordinance, it does not allow the vehicles, these recreational vehicles on the street. Is that correct?
What ordinance are you, are you talking about?
1875.
Under the zoning ordinance?
No public sidewalk or street. So this is why I'm very confused. Because you're saying we can vote on this or not, and I don't see that they've been aligned. I thought it was to align with this one.
I believe they're aligned.
They are aligned, and Rich can address that later.
So this 1876 simply aligns our code with the zoning ordinance. Is that correct? So if so, why is it inconsequential whether we pass one or the other?
It's not necessarily aligning it because they're two different things. The zoning code is going to address the uses and what's allowable under zoning on the person's property. It only addresses what's on their property. The city code, this one we're talking about right now, is talking about the, the, the parking on the street. So you're aligning, but you're, it's just working together hand in hand.
Well, I think it should be presented that way because it sounds confusing. If these truly align the code and the zoning, then that's important. And which one is enforceable? Which one does, does the police department think they would use to enforce this if it's passed?
I, I think the police department would, sorry, the police department would enforce the, the 1876. And again, the chief was part of our discussions, and he can probably enlighten you on, on that.
Mayor, members of council, that's correct. The current ordinance that's being discussed right now would be one that would apply to us as it relates to the RVs that would be parked on the street. And I think maybe some explanation. We looked at this kind of twofold. If there was the opportunity to maybe relax some of the zoning codes, could be an option that you may want to take a look at, and/or you could adopt this one as well, or you could adopt both. So we tried to bring you a variety of aspects as it relates to that. The next code you'll, you'll see is some relaxation in regards to where they can put the, the RV on their property. This one deals specifically with being on the street.
I, then, then I guess I'm wondering, should we look at the zoning before we try to change the ordinance? But, because this is, I thought that P&amp;Z put forth a pretty good, a good recommendation. And my understanding is that if we adopt P&amp;Z's recommendation, now I understand that we would need to adopt this in order to make it enforceable and align it with the zoning. Is that correct?
The, the zoning would be a first step in getting them, allowing them to place them on their property in areas where they've been limited before. This would be kind of, look at that, I guess, as, as kind of a beginning step. If you wanted to go further and completely ban them from being on the street, with the exception of for a short time period to load and unload, then that would be this particular ordinance.
Okay, I, I have read what planning and zoning did, the analysis, and all the cities they looked at. And then I've heard your analysis, which sounds different than what was found for the zoning.
I just looked at city codes.
And so you're just looking at city codes? So I, I guess I'm going back to Mr. Foggan and saying, is it important for us, or is there any merit in the order in which we address these? Should we address the zoning and then the code, or does it matter?
I would recommend that you address zoning first.
Then that would be 1875.
Carl, can I make, can I get?
Sure.
This, I mean, the way I understand this, this is proposing a section of the city code, the city ordinance, right, that does not exist right now, right?
Basically replacing, with a section that does not exist right now. And then what is proposed, and that's for a city code, which is more overarching, correct?
And then the zoning, which in these, in the other ordinance, contains language that we don't have on the books yet, but that is proposed, that is similar language. Is that correct?
What, I think what you're looking at is that we're not necessarily, I know this is very confusing. We're trying to align, or these will, both these will work together in conjunction, but they're not the exact same thing. And that's the confusion, I think. The zoning is only talking about the vehicles.
Yeah, no, I get that.
Right. So, and that's modifying the language to allow, to basically loosen the current language for parking on the residential lots. The city code is talking about the parking on the city street. You could do, you don't have to do either one of them, and you could do each one independently of the other.
No, I understand it.
But whichever order, whatever makes you folks comfortable. I know that the, the P&amp;Z one did have a, a big write-up about the history, and maybe if that makes it more comfortable for you guys to understand the, the zoning one, there's, there's no objection from staff to address that first if that makes you feel better, so you have a better understanding. But ultimately, I think they're both.
Shall we, shall we go ahead and move the order? Although I do have some people that have signed up that have been here since 5:30. May we go ahead and hear from the members of, of the residents that wish to address the council on this item? Item 5A is Jenny Nelson.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Jenny Nelson. I'm here today, today to discuss an issue of RV parking in the city streets of Kingman. I have lived at the same address in Kingman for 12 years. I bought my home in a nice neighborhood that had curbs and sidewalks, unlike many neighborhoods in Kingman. My home was only one block from the newly-built splash pad and five blocks from an elementary school. Our neighborhood was always full of children, which is why I chose to buy there. Kingman has been a great place to raise my children. For years, several neighbors and myself have been concerned about utility trailers and RVs that were parked in the streets near our homes. This concern came from the fact that I have five children that enjoyed playing in my grassy front yard, as well as riding their bikes and playing with other neighborhood children. I want to let you know that I'm also the supervisor for Mohave County Code Enforcement. I work every day to enforce the county's ordinance, which includes regulations in regards to street parking and setback parking. Code enforcement, along with the sheriff's department, take complaints daily due to homeowners storing RVs and utility trailers in the streets and in setbacks of their properties. I'm aware of the work that it takes to keep the county streets clear of trailers. Now that I have a chance to explain where I live and where I work, let me explain why this is a passionate topic for me. One year ago, I was unfortunate enough to be a part of a tragic accident. I was on my way home from work. I had just pulled into my street where my neighbor's grandchild was playing in the front of her grandmother's house. He darted out from in between two parked cars into the roadway due to the limited visibility from a stored RV. I was unable to see young Dustin, who was nearly four years old, tragically go underneath my truck. Dustin needlessly lost his life that day. I cannot fathom the pain his family must endure every day for the loss of their grandchild. This tragedy does not only affect his family, but has radically changed the lives of the family and of my, my family and myself. Every day, I live with the flashbacks and nightmares of that moment. I can no longer simply drive my vehicle without worrying that I may strike another child or see another child lose their life. I have spent the last year cringing every time I pulled onto my street in fear of hitting another child. The street around my home is lined with utility trailers, boats, and recreational vehicles. These trailers cause major congestion, limited visibility, making the neighborhood look cluttered and cause a major road hazard. Recreational vehicles, ATVs, and boats end up in the streets due to the lack of parking in the driveways. This parking hazard is what caused young Dustin to not see me as he raced into the street, as well as not allowing me to see him coming that tragic day. I've had to spend the, I will have to spend the rest of my life with the vision of what occurred that day. I pray that no one else has to live with my nightmare. Today, you have the responsibility to make changes to our city that could save a life someday. You will probably never know who you have helped save a life because the police and firefighters and paramedics will never have to get that horrible call that a child has needlessly lost their lives due to a simple parking issue. You have a responsibility and a, and a trust, or a duty and a trust to the community to make the changes that will impact children of this city. I have a PowerPoint that I created that I would like to show you. This is the property that's across the street from where I lived. This is the RV that has sat in the street for years. I have made multiple complaints to the police department regarding this RV over the years. It may disappear for four or five days, but it comes back. As you can see, their pickup truck decides at the back end it's okay to park in the street because the RV is there, and now it's almost like an extension of their driveway. I would say 90% of the time that this slide-out is also wide open into the street, along with a utility trailer that sits in front of it. This is another view. This is not quite a picture of what took place that day. I have an example of that here in a moment. But this is what we looked out, out our front door for years. Was this utility trailer sitting, or this RV sitting here? This is an example that, of a photo I took just recently, and this is very similar. This actually is on the street today. I drove by again and verified that this is currently on one of our city streets. This is the exact example of what took place in the accident I was in. As you can see in this photo, the one on the right, you can see an RV sitting there and two pickup trucks. Dustin came out from between those two similar pickup trucks and ended up underneath mine. There was no way for me to see his driveway because that RV was in the way. There was no way for me to see him come out between two parked trucks. I think that you guys are looking at this ordinance and you're worried about which one to take first. You need to understand that the reason those trucks were in the driveway, were in the street, was because their driveway was full of ATVs and utility trailers on top of it. If they would have had room in their driveway for their vehicles, their trucks would not have been in the street. So there is an importance that those trailer, utility trailers, don't go in a driveway either. They need to be able to park their cars there. These are some samples that I took throughout town today. You can see RVs and whatnot parked in their front setbacks. You can see RVs parked in our city streets at intersections. That makes it hard to see. This one depicts a property that shows, these neighbors have to look at this. This is where somebody has chosen to park their RV in their front setback. Nothing's being done about this. Again, this RV on the right is actually plugged in. Again, the, but the property on the left shows that there's, their, their driveways are full of RVs. Where are they going to park their cars? It just clutters our streets. This right here is actually the picture taken today of the property that I lived at. I live right to the right of this, right before, two houses before the stop sign. So not only do you see the RV sitting there, but they also have a utility trailer sitting across the street. It makes it really hard when I have five children and the neighbors have upwards of nine at any given time to be able to see children when you come around that corner. I want to thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, council? My name is Dee Goodwin. I have been a resident of Kingman for 53 years. I live at 3591 North Wells and have been at that address for 20 years. I am opposed to the proposal, or proposed ordinance that would allow parking and storage of RVs, campers, and motorhomes and utility trailers on driveways in front of residential homes. The city of Kingman's building codes have a 20-foot setback requirement for all structures for a reason. It creates a sight-distance triangle for drivers backing out of their driveways. If the city approves the above ordinance, it will be in direct contradiction to the building code 20-foot setback requirement. If a driver pulling out of their driveway cannot see past the obstruction allowed by this ordinance and gets hit, the city could be liable. I would suggest the ordinance should be, require parking and storage of all RVs, motorhomes and campers, and utility trailers be limited to double lots with a minimum frontage of 100 feet, and said vehicles be parked or stored beyond the 20-foot setback requirement. The parking and storage would only be allowed on their own property. Some owners would then park their, store their vehicles on the street as part of that ordinance. Part of the ordinance should include time limits as to how long these vehicles could be parked on the street, and I would suggest 24 hours parking, 120 hours away. I would also suggest the ordinance containing the vehicles may only be parked on your own frontage and make parking, storage a ticketable violation.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else in the audience wish to address the council at this time? Seeing none, uh, what's the will of the council? How do you want to proceed? Do you want to look at this, or do you want to go ahead and, and discuss ordinance 1875 first? Any thoughts?
You know, I think the gentleman, his comments have some merit. I'd like to see those revisions. And I just want to take a moment to tell Jenny, thank you for your courage to come here today and to present, the presentation and your, and your testimony. I appreciate it.
So why don't we discuss the zoning ordinance, 1875, first? Is that all right with the council?
It is with me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we're not going to take any action at this time until we've had review of, of ordinance 1875, amending subsection 26830 of the zoning ordinance of city of Kingman by modifying the storage requirements for recreational vehicles, boats, and campers on residentially zoned properties. I don't need to reread that again. You, thank you.
Yes. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I'll try not to confuse you too much on this subject. This is a city-initiated text amendment, and the request is to modify the conditions under which RVs, boats, trailers, campers may be stored on residentially zoned properties in Kingman. The current ordinance within the zoning ordinance, again, this is just the zoning ordinance, does the following. It bans the storage of vehicles in required front yards. It limits the number of vehicles to two per 20,000 square feet, up to a maximum of four on any lot. Then it also requires the storage of lots within a required side yard or rear yard behind a solid fence or proved planting, so it's screened from view from adjoining residents. At this time, there's no, as you know, no ban on parking or limitations on, of parking of RVs or similar vehicles on, on our streets. And as we've heard tragically, the, these vehicles do pose a hazard, blocking views of, of driveways and street intersections at times. So the council discussed this at a meeting back in June as a discussion item. Council did ask the P&amp;Z Commission to review our ordinance to see if perhaps some changes needed to be considered to encourage more off-street parking prior to the establishment of new ordinance. Excuse me, the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed this at the June 12th and also the July 10th meeting. They did initiate a text amendment at the July 10th meeting. The commission and the public did discuss the following ideas. One was to no longer require sight obstructing fencing for storage areas. Another idea was to require their vehicles to be stored behind the front facade of the- Another idea was to require their vehicles to be stored behind the front facade of the home, and also the idea of allowing the vehicles to be stored in front yards provided they're on a paved driveway, and do not extend into the street or do not block the sidewalks. And I did take a look at a number of cities' ordinances. These are the actual zoning ordinance. I believe Lee looked at city codes. So we took a look at to see what their restrictions were as far as time, parking time restrictions, parking allowances, storage allowances, and also screening requirements. I don't know if you want me to go through each one of those, but we can come back to that slide if you're, if you want me to. But we did generally, to sum up, most cities did distinguish between the shorter-term parking periods and longer-term parking or storage of RVs and other similar vehicles. They had different standards for those. There are two cities that require parking vehicles to be on paved surfacing, and longer-term storage is generally not required to be screened, except for the largest vehicles. I believe Prescott required trailers of a certain length to be either screened or behind a fence. So the commission considered three options that went before them at their meeting. The first option was pretty much keeping the current ordinance, except tweaking it a bit and allowing a seventy-two-hour parking allowance on their, on the property that currently is not allowed. The second option, I believe, was to allow parking, but only in the side yard or rear yard areas. And the third option is the one that's, they ultimately recommended, which is reflected in ordinance eighteen seventy-five. And this one would allow parking of, storage of RVs and similar vehicles only on paved driveways in the front, in front-side yards. It would allow storage of, in the rear yards and side yards behind the front facade of the structure, would no longer have a screening requirement, would also reiterate that occupation of these vehicles is not permitted on residential lots. That's already the case, but it would just state that more clearly. And again, no portion of the vehicles would be able to extend into or block a public sidewalk or street. And this is just a graphic representation of what that ordinance would do. Green areas represent the areas that RVs and other campers and boats and that sort of thing could be stored, either in side yards, rear yards, or on paved driveways or paved parking areas in the front yard. The areas in white would be the areas that storage would not be permitted. And again, no blocking or extending into sidewalks or streets. So option three again was the recommended option from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it's reflected in ordinance eighteen seventy-five. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Can I ask one? And this might actually be for Police Chief. This would create some significant issues for some of our residences. Ms. Nelson's pictures depicted, there are a lot of vehicles that are parked in front of residences. I went ahead and checked to see how many storage facilities we have in town and the cost of some of these facilities. Having said that, this could be, I wouldn't say a hardship, but this may take a while for people to be able to become compliant. Do you have any thoughts on if, in fact, the council did support this, when, might it go into effect, and then when would enforcement begin? Is there going to be a grace period? What could that look like?
Typically, it's thirty days from the vote of the council to go into effect. But as you may recall with several other ordinances, we've typically gone on a media campaign to basically enlighten everybody as to the changes, and then from there go into a warning and before we would do any type of enforcement.
So months?
Typically, we would do like a ninety-day
Okay.
window is what we have done in the past.
Thank you very much for that information. Other questions of staff? Yes?
For you, Chief, since you're already there. What is the process? You get a warning? How many days do you get to move the vehicle out? And then you get ticketed? And then do we tow it? Is that how it works?
If it's a city code, as we were discussing earlier, that's a different aspect in regards to us, where we would be able to just cite upon the violation. Here, we would have to follow a different process based upon the zoning. And Carl or Lee could probably give you additional from that aspect. That can be a more prolonged approach in getting removal.
Okay. So if we don't change the city code and we only do zoning, it will be more difficult to get those RVs or large boats or whatever moved out of the area. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And to clarify, the city code is a class-one misdemeanor. If somebody violates it, the average life of a misdemeanor case is six months.
Six months? Just to that point, one of the things that I've noticed, and actually I've noticed in Mr. Goodwin's neighborhood as I've driven around over there, is that it seems like there are a lot of large RVs parked on the streets that don't seem to have been moved in a very long time, and whether or not they can even move at this point is questionable. I mean, they could just be broken down there, and then it would be even more difficult to get them to move out unless this was a law and you were able to then tow it, because you'd be able to tow it, is that right, Chief, if it was a code?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I know we're kind of jumping back and forth, but they're all together in my mind.
You're good?
Just a couple. So I think I'm getting clarity now. So this zoning would just basically give the options of where it could be parked in the yard, and the code would take it off the street.
Correct.
Okay. So just one question about the, this probably goes to Mr. Ruggles. On paved driveways, now, when I looked at seventy, between two-point-seven-hundred, concrete asphalt, recycled asphalt, those were all allowed?
Yes.
Are those things that are typically used in front yards?
Typically, driveways are either concrete or asphalt. Very rarely asphalt. Usually, they are concrete.
Okay.
There are people with gravel driveways. What are they going to do?
Well, if they wanted to park their RV on it, they would probably have to pave the driveway first.
So could you, just for my own justification, what's the difference?
Well, it would depend on how you would want us to enforce it. If it would be a proactive approach, then we would have to notify them. Usually, what we would do is send a letter first and let them know what the violation is and give them a certain amount of time to correct that.
Thank you.
Was, can I ask a quick question regarding the surfacing? What was the thought process as far as what the surface was, whether it be gravel or paved?
Well, I think it would at least define an area for the RV to be stored. And so the thought was that we didn't, I think it was more of an aesthetic, because we didn't want RVs just parked across someone's front yard in the gravel. So that's sort of the thought process.
Question? Does that answer your question?
Yes.
I'm not sure that, if it's prescribed as a driveway, it's a driveway.
Right.
That was my thinking, but I'm sorry.
I agree.
Just, again, if the, if these recreational vehicles are parked behind the front of the house or in the rear, it doesn't matter what the surface is.
That's correct.
It's just if they're parked in the front or in a front-side.
Right. That would be the only places where it would have to be on a paved surface.
Have a dedicated place.
Right.
Okay.
I just want to ask, the goal here is to get them off the streets, right?
Correct.
So kind of when we start talking about aesthetics, we're adding layers to what we were originally proposing to do was a safety issue, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Chris.
I want to make sure I understand. So we disallow RV parking on the street. The discussion is possibly we allow it in the driveway. Does all that do is move vehicles into the street for parking then? I don't know what, I don't know what the benefit would be.
That's a definite possibility. You know, in the past, we've had it where we've had vehicles that have been in parking lots where we've had to move them out, only to find them on the street. And then it becomes an issue that we can't enforce. So you can get a ripple effect with this. So they could move their RV into the driveway, and they could park their personal vehicles on the street. You are correct.
So in order for this to be effective, you'd have to eliminate all street parking? Or that would be one option?
That's an option.
I'm just saying, we're just replacing one hazard with the other, potentially.
The ideal thing would be to have nothing in the street, but that's not feasible from the community's standpoint.
Right. Well, I appreciate that P and Z did due diligence on the analysis and looked at a number of cities and really considered all of the consequences, if you will. And I know that they do care about the aesthetics. They talk about that a lot in their meetings, and so I understand where they're coming from. And the fact that they're unanimous in their decision about this really, to me, is influential, because I know that you've held public hearings and that you've discussed it a great deal. So it would be a perfect world if we could get everything off the street, and technically, if we could get them out of the driveways. But I think, just in my experience, it's easier to see cars, it's even easier to see around trucks than it is about RVs and these bigger recreational vehicles.
And if I may, as a group, we had this discussion with the planning and zoning aspect of it. We looked at that as a possibility for council to consider that. That may be a first step, and we may want to try that first to see if, in fact, it does ease up some of the issues we're seeing across the community. And if not, we could revisit the code a little bit further down the road. Would be one option for you to consider. We tried to bring you a variety for you to take a look at and weigh which way you would like to go.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one. I think that it's sort of a situation of having to choose the lesser of two evils at this point, because I don't think that, right now, it is feasible for total, you know, no vehicles on the street. So I've got a question on number three, Chief, where it says, "No portion of any such vehicle shall extend into or block any portion of the public sidewalk or street." How, so as far as enforcement, the other ordinance is actually going to add some additional ability for our law enforcement to enforce.
Correct.
Okay.
That would be correct.
Thank you.
That's important. Any other questions or comments?
I guess we don't have any. Did you have something else you wish to add? Okay.
Going to make a motion if...
All right, well, let's go ahead, and shall we go back to ordinance number eighteen seventy-six? Did you, is that where you were?
I was going to act on the zoning.
Okay. So then you want to go ahead and start with item six-eight under New Business. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance number eighteen seventy-five.
I'm going to interrupt real fast. Are we, eighteen seventy-five, the zoning one?
The zoning.
Is a public hearing. So you just have to do that real fast before you take your action.
Okay, absolutely.
It's, we're just kind of all, kind of fluid here, so.
Thank you. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this item? This is a public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. It is now an action item.
Move that we adopt ordinance eighteen seventy-five.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance number eighteen seventy-six. We've already had discussion on that. Go ahead and entertain a motion. So do you wish to make a motion or just, someone wish to make a motion to not approve?
Make a motion to approve ordinance eighteen seventy-six.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution, back under old business, resolution five-one-seven-three-R. Canvas of the August twenty-eighth, twenty-eighteen primary election. Arizona revised statutes require the governing body to canvass this type of election within six to twenty days of the election. This canvas was originally completed on September twelfth, twenty-eighteen, and an amended resolution is being adopted in compliance with a recent court hearing, court ruling, pardon me. Election materials will be available in council chambers prior to the meeting for inspection by the council and/or public. Staff recommends approval of resolution number fifty-one-seventy-three-R.
And Mayor, I was just going to jump in real fast. This is because, you know, obviously, we already canvassed the election.
Right.
And then there was a challenge to the process that we followed, which was under the guidance of the League with their elections handbook and the interpretation of the statutes as they stood then. And we just wanted to, obviously, with that ruling, we need to clarify the current canvas. But, you know, also, as part of the position is, you know, the city was trying to comply with the standards that were promulgated by the League with this election manual, and they did provide us an awful lot of help leading up to this. But ultimately, when we got to the hearing, they decided they didn't really want to help us. But what we're looking at is, we need to comply with this ruling as the court directed it, and this is going to be the only, we're going to be the only city that's going to be complying with this law in this way. Just as a side note, what I did do is send a letter to the League advising with this ruling and requesting that they either revise their training manuals so the rest of the state complies with the statute as our court has interpreted it, or work with the state legislature to see if they can amend the process to ensure that all of the statutes are blended together so that the process isn't changed how it kind of changed on the city. So I think that's a brief background of where we're at and why we're doing what we're doing, so.
So all council needs to do this evening is pass, approve resolution fifty-one-seventy-three, which would be in accordance with the court's decision.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve a resolution fifty-one-seventy-three-R.
I just want to make a comment really quick to Carl. You know, as a council member, I mean, this has been one crazy train ride, and the council, we've just been along for the ride. I mean, we have nothing really to do with the process. We've just been kind of watching like everybody else. So I'm a little disappointed in the League for advising and then just sort of leaving you high and dry. But it is what it is, so hopefully, they'll take action to correct the ambiguity.
I expressed some displeasure with the League, and, you know, in essence, the staff was kind of along with the ride as well, because all we're trying to do is comply with the process that we're trained on and handle it the way we can best handle it. So the outcome is what it is. But again, it's about the process. It's not about the candidates, and we're happy to move forward and have a great election coming up here in a couple of weeks.
Once again, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution fifty-one-seventy-three-R.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item B, resolution fifty-one-eighty, approving the sale, execution, and delivery of excise tax revenue obligations for the relocation of Fire Station Two. The Fire Station Two relocation project is currently underway. The fiscal year twenty-eighteen-nineteen adopted budget identifies debt as the funding source for this project. With the size, term, and scope of this project, it is recommended that the city select direct placement as the financing option. The next step in the direct placement process is for council to approve resolution number fifty-one-eighty, which approves the sale, execution, and delivery of excise tax revenue obligations to finance the Fire Station Two relocation project. Staff recommends council approve resolution fifty-one-eighty, approving the sale, execution, and delivery of excise tax revenue obligations to finance the Fire Station Two relocation project.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. So tonight's item is to approve the resolution fifty-one-eighty to approve the financing, to approve financing of Fire Station Two relocation project. So quickly, a few things that I want to point out is the difference between a public bond offering and a direct placement, which is the recommendation that we're moving forward with. The direct placement allows us to borrow money directly from a lending institution, whereas the public bond offering, you are selling your bonds to investors in the securities market. Now, a direct placement, a direct placement is something that banks are actually very interested in, depending on the size and the type of project. For instance, four and a half million dollars, fire station, fifteen-year term, pretty simple project, and so they have interest in that, and they are able to offer competitive interest. And they are able to offer competitive interest rates, competitive terms. The cost of issuance also for a direct placement is a little bit less than a public bond offering. We're not printing securities documents. We're not required to get a credit rating. So we also save a little bit of money on that as well for this sort of project or this sort of financing. We would actually save about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars in cost of issuance. And then the timing, and although that wasn't the decision, it is a shorter timing as far as from tonight, if the resolution is approved, until when the actual agreements are executed and the closing of the deal. It's about a two-month process, just over that. Public bond offerings are slightly longer. So that is the reason why the direct placement financing mechanism is brought before you. Couple of things in the resolution that I want to be sure to point out, and probably the biggest piece of the resolution, is the pledge. The pledge of the taxes, that, the pledge of the revenues that are going to support that bond, that annual bond payment. We are pledging in this resolution similar revenues as what we have done with our Airway Avenue excise tax revenue obligation, meaning that they are general fund taxes. They are a couple of our state shared revenues, so income tax state shared revenues and our sales tax state shared revenues, franchise fees, as well as building permits and court fees and fines. What we are not pledging are the half percent, half percent TPT dedicated to pavement preservation, the half percent TPT dedicated to capital projects, the one percent additional restaurant and bar tax dedicated to streets, and the two percent additional room tax dedicated to capital projects. Those are not part of our pledge, and that's just important to point out. It's important for the banks to know what we're willing to pledge. It's important for us to know what we're willing to pledge. One other thing in the resolution that I want to be sure to point out is in the very beginning and throughout the document, we talk about an amount that we will borrow not to exceed five million dollars. During budget season, we talked about the estimated cost of the Fire Station being about four and a half million dollars. However, we don't know what those construction cost estimates are going to be. And the rate that we use for our annual debt service payment in our budget was a very conservative rate, so five percent over a fifteen-year term. Rates right now are about three and a half percent. By the time we close this deal, it might be closer to three and three-quarters percent. So there's some room for flexibility there in case the construction cost estimates come in higher than the four and a half million dollars. And that will be up to you then at that point. But you'll have some flexibility and some wiggle room with that dollar amount. Doesn't mean we have to spend it, just that it is available if you choose to award that. So that is the resolution itself and a few of the items that I wanted to point out. I also would like to just go over the timetable and process of this sort of financing mechanism. So tonight, if you approve the resolution, the placement agent and our special counsel will begin drafting term sheets and information packages and then distributing those to banks. That'll happen late October. The proposals will not be due until after the election, meaning that a recommendation will not be brought back to you until after then because, of course, we don't want to execute any documents, make any sort of commitment until we know the results of the election. So at that point, we'll have some sort of recommendation for you, whatever that may be, and we don't know at this point. If we are able to move forward with the Fire Station relocation project, and that is your desire at that point, then we would ask for approval to move forward with that, and we would close the deal by early to mid-December. So the next step in this process is to ask for your approval of resolution fifty-one eighty. There are some documents or some agreements that are in your agenda item this evening. They are not for execution tonight. They're really just for reference so that you know what's going to be brought before you in December, if that is the case, or what we will be signing at the closing. A trust agreement, placement agent agreement, and a trustee agreement. So I can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Is there a question?
Yeah, well, I just, I appreciate you pointing out where the revenue would come from and that not a final commitment or execution wouldn't happen until after the election. I know that there are no, the half percent that would go to the project, but we still may need to do a reevaluation because the city can't put anything else on the ballot for two more years, and we have pavement preservation and a lot of other things that we'll need to reevaluate. So appreciate the clarification.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comment? Seeing none, it's now an action item. Entertain a motion to approve resolution fifty-one eighty? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to resolution number fifty-one eighty-one, designating October twenty eighteen as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Kingman. A resolution by the mayor and common council of the City of Kingman, designating October first, twenty eighteen, through October, I'm going to say, was that supposed to be thirty-first? Twenty eighteen, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Kingman. Staff recommends approval. Is there any discussion on this? Everyone had the opportunity to review the resolution in the packet.
Yes, and we have representatives that would like to speak to this.
Wonderful, very much kindly approached.
Hello, council members. My name is Noel Hughes. I am a domestic violence advocate and program manager with Kingman Aid to Abused People. I do work in our domestic violence emergency shelter here in Kingman. And with me here today is Doreen Obanion. She is our sexual assault advocate working at our advocacy center on seventeen seventy airway. On behalf of Kingman Aid to Abused People, Board of Directors, our domestic violence advocates that work in our shelter, as well as our family advocacy center, but most importantly, the survivors of domestic violence that we see every single day. And also, we have to honor the ones who have died and lost their lives to the violence within our community. I would like to thank city council members, Mayor Monica Gates, and the community at large for recognizing October being Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We, as a community, have worked hard to show this awareness. We are out there, we're in the schools. Kingman Police Department is lighting their, you know, building purple, as well as the Capitol at this time has recognized October being Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It takes a community to fight the violence within our city, Mojave County, and the state. But it is preventable, and thank you again for having us and recognizing. Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening. Having said that, I will entertain a motion to approve resolution number fifty-one eighty-one.
So moved.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to department reports.
Yes, I just have one report, and that is to correct the record from the work session. And I just, in reporting the zoning or the lack of annexation, so the airport is not annexed, but the property that was discussed tonight is, has been annexed. It's in the city. And the confusion was that it needs to go through a major general plan amendment. And that major general plan amendment is a six-month, easily a six-month process. So I apologize for the confusion. The airport is not in the city, but the property in question is. So I just wanted to make sure that we got that corrected, so that's the only thing I have, Mayor.
Thank you. So we'll move on to announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of things. The first thing is I want to just make sure that the community and the council are aware that there's a tri-city council meeting scheduled for the seventeenth of October at Bullhead City. It will be in their council chambers, and that starts at ten AM. So I just want to make sure that all of you know that. And then we, as a city staff, have been working on a voter outreach education program in an effort to try to get the facts out with regards to several of the things that our electorate are, were going to be deciding. And so I just wanted to announce that there will be voter outreach education three classes. October eleventh, at six PM, there will be a class at the police station, the Kingman Police Station in their community room. That will be at six PM. On October twelfth, at noon, at the Kingman Regional Medical Center in the SEBAT conference room, there will be a class. And then October thirteenth, which is a Saturday, at ten AM at Lee Williams High School in the practice gym. And we will be covering facts on home rule. We will providing information on the I-11 interchanges and facts on TPT with regards to roads and CIP. And so we also had a booth at the Andy Divine Days where we passed out brochures, had maps, tried to educate people on these different issues. I think we had some success getting the information out. We'll also be at the next two First Fridays with a booth as well. And so I just wanted the council to be aware of those and to invite the community. Of course, we will be doing several press releases inviting the community to come out and learn more on these facts before the events, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Other announcements?
I do have a couple of announcements. This Friday is our next First Friday in downtown Kingman. On Saturday, we have a special Chillin' on Beale. And also on Saturday is our first community opioid symposium. So I want to make sure everybody knew about those events.
Thank you very much.
I have no announcements, thank you.
I just wanted to remind everyone that this Saturday is the first Air Fest at the airport and/or open house there, first one to be had in quite a while. And I hope everyone's able to make it out for that.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember?
Yeah, last Wednesday at noon, the Economic Development Advisory Commission held their initial meeting. I think it went very well. There was reports from economic development staff. And I really think it's going to be a good commission for the city. So I look forward to seeing their work. Thanks.
Councilmember Cress?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, well, let's start with you again. Any requests for future work session, agenda items, and/or calendar adjustments? Start then.
No, thank you.
Yes, I have one. I'd like to request for one of the November work sessions, a group update from the Beale Street Theater. I saw them this past weekend, and they committed that they were ready to come and give an update on all their activities. So I'd like to have them placed on a November work session, please.
Vice Mayor?
No, thank you.
Nothing for me? Nothing?
I have a couple of things. Mr. Froggen, we had talked about Jim Healy giving an update from their trip in November. I think we said November. I'd also like to see on a work session item some information about the League of Cities, what they charge us to be members and what we get from those fees, what the benefit is to the city of being a member. And then the other item I have is I would like an update in the near future about the downtown streetscape plan that we had discussed during the council retreat. Mr. Plonny had mentioned the bump outs and funding and moving that forward, but I'd like to see those and what they will look like, as well as the other updates. I know there are some nonprofits that are adding benches and... One other item that escapes me at this time, but if we could just see an all-around update on downtown, where we're at with our part of it, the streetscape, and what other groups are adding to our downtown. Really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last item on the agenda was Need for Executive Session. Unfortunately, we don't have the background information and able to have that session tonight. So I'll entertain a motion that we move that to the next council meeting.
So moved. A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? My question is, when will those materials be available to the council?
Tomorrow.
They are currently in council's mailbox.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, motion and a second. To adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening.